Good morning, everyone. We'll call the April 2nd, 2013 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order and ask Councilman Scott Conger to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly father, we come before you today giving thanks. Thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. Thank you for today in allowing us to be able to serve our city and our communities. We ask that you and do us with the competency of thy divine wisdom that we make the decisions that best serve our communities and city. We ask all these things in your son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need, I think you can indicate on the roll call that all council members are present. And item four is approval of the minutes of the March 5th, 2013 city council meeting. And if there are no, if council members have a copy of those minutes, if there's no additions or corrections, we'll just declare those approved. Item five is invitation for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to be heard on any item under new business, if you'd let us know at that time, we'll be happy to have you come up and speak to the council. Have some proclamations this morning, so council, excuse me, I'll go down to the podium. First proclamation this morning is National Tartan Day, so let me ask Dr. Wayne and Judy Reer to come up and other members of the Madison Scots, and I think we have several of them here. So y'all come on up and we'll read the proclamation and make it a part of minutes of this meeting. Welcome, y'all. Come over here closer to me. I'm right. Thank you all for being here. It's a proclamation, whereas April 6th has special significance for all Americans, especially those of Scottish descent, because the Declaration of Abroth, the Scottish Declaration of Independence, was signed on April 6th, 1320, and the American Declaration of Independence was modeled on that inspirational document. And whereas Scottish Americans played a major role in the founding of our nation, and that almost half of the signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Scottish descent, the governors in nine of the original 13 states were of Scottish ancestry, and Scottish Americans successfully helped shape and guide this country in its formative years during our nation's most troubled times. And whereas the monumental achievements and valuable contributions made by Scottish Americans have been notable in the fields of science, technology, medicine, government, politics, economics, architecture, literature, media, visual, and performing arts. And whereas the 200 organizations throughout the United States that honor Scottish heritage representing the hundreds of thousands of Americans of Scottish descent, tradition, and culture are commended for not letting the great contributions of the Scottish people go unnoticed by observing Tartan Day on April 6th. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, excuse me, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 6th, 2013 as National Tartan Day and ask all citizens to join in the celebration of the important achievements and contributions of Scottish Americans have made to form our country. So it's an honor for me to present to you this proclamation and ask you to come up and make some comments.
First, I'd like to thank you, thank you, Sealy. And some of our other folks will have little things to say, but I do want to thank you all and for the support. We are now the Madison Scots, and we have some activities planned for coming up in the year, and we'll be getting back to you and want you to help support us and come. Thank you.
Always heard it takes a man to wear a kilt. But I'd just like to reiterate what Judy said about the Madison Scots. We're proud to be part of this community. And our focus is to present things to you all, to the City of Jackson, that are historically based and things that are family oriented. And we appreciate when you see in the paper that something's coming up that the Madison Scots are involved in. We'd appreciate you coming and enjoying what we would like to present for you. It's been an absolute pleasure. We've been at this about six, seven years, the ones that we've been able to work with, been at about six, seven years, and we really enjoy putting on a festival once a year, and hopefully that's gonna come to pass this week, or this year. Thank you for this honor and thank you for your support of Madison Scots.
Next proclamation is Equal Pay Day. I ask Jan Bannum, President of the Jackson Business Professional Women, to come up along with any of the members that are here this morning. Y'all come on up here. It's a proclamation, whereas 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act entitled VII of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of inequable pay differentials. And whereas according to statistics released in 2012 by the Institute for Women's Policy Research, year-round, full-time working women in 2011 earned only 77% to 82% of the earnings of year-round, full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas graduating to a pay gap, the earnings of women and men, one year after college graduation, by the American Association of University Women, published in 2012, establishes a 5% pay gap between female and male college graduates who are working full-time one year after graduation. Report, which uses the latest national representative data compares applies to apples to apples by looking at the pay gap after controlling for various factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, college major, and hours worked. It also examines one immediate effect that the pay gap has on many women, the heavy burden of student loan debt. And whereas the 2012 AAUW research also establishes that the pay gap widens over time so that by age 65, women earn 65% of what their male peers earn. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue cost or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing their American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 9th symbolizes the time in the next year in which the wages paid to American women catch up to wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 9th, 2013 as Equal Pay Day in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourages business to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. It's an honor for me to present this to you all, and thank you for everything you do. Ms. Jan?
Thank you, Mayor Gist. We appreciate you and city council for your support of Jackson area business professional women. BPW was founded 94 years ago this month. Every year in April, BPW recognizes a national day of action promoting fair pay known as Equal Pay Day, celebrated in April because it symbolizes the month when women's wages catch up to men's wages from the previous year. Equal Pay Day will be held April 9th, 2013. According to statistics released in September 2010, women working full-time made on average 77 cents for every dollar a male earns. Now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which will strengthen the Equal Pay Day Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. Thank you.
Okay, our next proclamation is Lane College Lady Dragons Basketball Team. Let me ask the ladies to come on up along with coaches Stacy Buchanan and DeWicke Green, members of Lady Dragons, if you're here. Good to have you here. Ladies could not get out of class. There they are. Good to have y'all with us. Y'all come on up here and surround the, surround the floor. It's a proclamation, whereas Lane College Lady Dragons Basketball Team is honored this day for displaying the high standards of academic performance, sportsmanship, and fair play. And whereas with the support and encouragement of the college president, faculty, staff, parents, alumni, and friends, the Lady Dragons were selected as the All Academic Team of the Southern Intercollegiate Athletic Conference for 2013, the first time in the college history. And whereas this team achieved the highest cumulative grade point average among all teams in the SIAC. And whereas the Lady Dragons coaches, Ms. Stacy Buchanan, Mrs. DeWicke Green, have displayed superb coaching skills and stressed the concept of being a student before an athlete, which enabled the team to possess the knowledge, confidence, and skills to play the best of their abilities and excel in academics. Now therefore, I, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2nd, 2013, as Lane College Lady Dragons Basketball Team Day and urge all citizens to recognize their accomplishments. Congratulations, ladies.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the team, and I also just want to introduce everyone because they're the ones that made this possible. Starting to my left, this is Crystal Raifert, Senior Taryn Avian, Solanda Crawford, Marissa Stewart, Katora Fleming, Jasmine Craig, Sequoia Cox, Sierra Ingram, and Sharon Morgan. And we just want to say thank you, and we're just honored to be here.
Thank you, ladies, and congratulations to you. Next proclamation is something that I know we're all going to participate in, especially the Jackson City Council, and that is Jump Start Jackson Proclamation. So Annette and Tony and Sandy and anybody, come on up here. Okay, great. This is a proclamation, whereas childhood and youth inactivity, obesity, and poor diet have become major preventable health issues throughout the United States. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, over 30% of children and adolescents ages 6 to 19 are considered overweight. And whereas poor diet and lack of physical activity leads to approximately 400,000 deaths annually in the United States. And whereas the state of Tennessee ranks as one of the highest states in the incidence of childhood obesity. And whereas the City of Jackson, County of Madison, and the Jackson, Madison County school system have partnered to improve physical fitness, diet, health, and wellness in our community through the Jump Start Jackson Initiative. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the, Mayor of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2013, as Jump Start Jackson Community Wellness Month. And witness wherever you're hearing to set our hands and cause the cells of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Madison County, Tennessee, to be affixed the second day of April, 2013. And I'll ask one of you all, Annette, yeah, come on up, to tell us everything that's gonna go on.
All right, I'll let Annette talk about some of the, more of the specifics around the event, but certainly, Mayor, I want to appreciate you, Mayor Harris, Annette, Sandy, all the folks with the city that have done such a fantastic job with this initiative. And certainly, Sam's Club being able to be a partnership with you guys since the beginning, the inception of the event, seven years, and it's just amazing what we've been able to accomplish. And the turnout gets bigger and bigger every year. So personally, myself, someone for two years now who has been on a journey of 47 pounds lost and keeping it off, certainly, health and wellness is something, Mayor, that we all need to be focused on in our community to help our community in longevity. So certainly, thank you for the opportunity.
This Saturday, at the Carl Perkins Civic Center, we will start registration at 9:00 a.m. The walk will begin at 10:00, and I encourage all of the council members to come out and join us. We would love to have you. It's a great day. It's gonna be beautiful. We're gonna walk by the new development downtown, so we're very excited about that. I just want to say a very special thank you to Mayor Gist. He's been very supportive over the past seven years in this endeavor. We have made great strides in the community. And a special thanks to Sam's Club. They have been our silver sponsor for the past seven years, and we could not do what we do without them. We have other sponsors that have joined partners with us, but Sam's has been with us since the beginning, and we really appreciate their efforts. So this Saturday is gonna be beautiful, 10 a.m. Let's walk. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. I think we have Sherri Stanfield here from the Madison County Director of the Carl Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse. Those come on up. Thank you for being here. Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas we need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes life's path to nearly 4 million of our nation's children annually. And whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries, and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future. And whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. And whereas Exchange Club, Carl Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse, through its parent training, educational programs, and community service activities believes that parents and community members need to go the extra mile in preventing and dealing with child abuse to improve the quality of family life for our children and families. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2013, as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to use this time to better understand, recognize, and respond to this grievous problem as the center helps our families to go the extra mile to prevent abuse. And we commend the Exchange Club, Carl Perkins Center for the prevention of child abuse for its continued success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse, and urge full public support of their successful efforts. So it's an honor, and thank you for doing everything you all do.
Thank you so much. Our theme this year for child abuse prevention is Go the Extra Mile. It's never crowded. Why should we go the extra mile? Why is it worth the effort? Because one in four girls, one in six boys, will be sexually abused before they reach the age of 18. This doesn't just happen in other cities across the United States, it happens right here in Jackson, Tennessee. There's still much work to do. For those of you who go the extra mile, we want to take this time to say thank you, but there's still work to do. So join us. This is a perfect opportunity for the Month of Miracles and Voluntarism. Join us and help us spread the word that our children are worth it, and we all need to go the extra mile so that we can protect children and they don't have to face the nightmare that the children that we work with at the center have faced. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Councilman Ernest Brooks for orchestrating our final proclamation, and that's to honor the Madison Academic Decathlon Team. So let me ask the coaches, Paula Hatcher and Joey Balconis, to come up along with the team and be recognized. Then y'all get right back to class and continue to practice. Come right over here and just line up in front of the council, be fine.
Mayor, their principal is here as well. Ms. Emerson is here.
Yes, there you are. Okay. Good to see you. Come on up, come on up. Good to have the principal here this morning. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for allowing us to honor you all with this proclamation. Very well deserved. It's proclamation, whereas congratulations are in order for the Madison Academic Decathlon Team who recently competed and won at Austin Peay State University Tennessee Academic Decathlon State Championship. The team dominated the competition by over 10,000 points. And whereas the Madison Academic High School Academic Decathlon Team has been existent since the school was established in 2003. And whereas with a dedicated coaching staff and overachieving team members, the team has won the state tournament for 10 consecutive years. And whereas the Madison Academic High School Academic Decathlon Team has won national tournaments in 2004, 2007, 2008, and 2011, and placed second in 2008, 2010, and 2012. And whereas coaches for the 2003, 2007 were Teresa Luna and Marilyn Kemp. Coaches for the 2008 through 2012 were Don Rowe and Barbara Fowler. And present coaches are Paula Hatcher and Joey Balconis. And whereas seven out of 10 years, the team placed in the top three in the nation. And whereas the team has participated in national tournaments, Boise, Idaho in 2004, Chicago, Illinois in 2005, San Antonio, Texas, 2006, Honolulu, Hawaii in 2007, Garden Grove, California in 2008, Memphis, Tennessee in 2009, Omaha, Nebraska in 2010, Charlotte, North Carolina in 2011, and Albuquerque, New Mexico in 2012. Now therefore, I, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2nd, 2013, as Madison Academic Decathlon Team Day and urge all citizens to embrace this most important program. Again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for being wonderful ambassadors for a city. And Coach, I'll ask you to come up, and I'll present this to you, and if you'd like to address the crowd.
Thank you, and I'd like an opportunity to brag on these young adults right here. Most people in our community do not realize what these young people do every single day. The topic this year for the Academic Decathlon is Russia. Everything Russian, Russian literature, Russian math, Russian music, art, history, and a few other subjects. In addition to that, they have to perform excellent interview skills, speech skills, and take rigorous tests that would make most of us cower and run away crying. They spend anywhere from two to four hours a day at Madison preparing for this. Then they go home and put in another hour and a half. I know because I get the text messages every single day of them text messaging questions and quizzing each other as late as 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night. They put this first. They do what most people are too scared to do. They study harder than anyone I have ever seen, and I am so proud of them and so excited to be a part of this team. We do leave in three weeks for nationals, and what I would like to say is, this program costs about $25,000 a year to operate, and it is from the grace of the city and the people of this community that we are able to continue. Our trip that we partake on in the next few weeks will cost $16,000, and we don't get to do that if it isn't for the health of the community. So I do take this opportunity to beg a little bit. You know, any contribution that we get is so, is so grateful. These students don't pay for anything. They shouldn't. Their time should be spent studying. We don't take the time to fundraise because that takes away from their studies. And I'm very proud to say that these are the future of Jackson, Tennessee, and this country. These are the CEOs of next year's leadership. These are your future politicians. These are the doctors, the lawyers that will lead this country. They need your support. Thank you so much.
Okay, item seven is first readings, we have none. Second readings, item eight, we have none under new business. Item nine, we have consideration revision to Jada Estates' North PRD Preliminary Development Plan. And then we need a public hearing on this.
Yes.
Okay. If you would, go ahead.
Good morning. This is an item that has been presented to you before. As you will recall, planned residential development is packaged with the zoning when it comes before you. So basically, you, when you review the zoning, when you approve the zoning, you also approve a development plan that is a part of that. And anytime there is a deviation from that development plan, if it's significant enough, then that development plan has to go back to Planning Commission and back to U.S. City Council to approve, and that's what we're doing this morning. Jada Estates, which is located on Old Humboldt Road, is located near the TVA power lines just north of Lennox Village, had a development plan that was already approved, and now they're wishing to revise that development plan. The development plan that's being revised isn't that much of a deviation from what was originally approved. There are two more units that are associated with the development change. There was also some shifting of the development to provide more of a buffer to the subdivision to the south. So that's basically the only changes that are being made. The homes are still a brick construction. The units themselves, in terms of design, have not changed drastically from what was originally approved, and the Planning Commission has recommended approval of this to you.
Questions? Go ahead, Councilor.
Yes, what type of buffer is that gonna fit there between?
Joel McAlexander is here this morning. I would let him address that, but from my understanding, it would be somewhat of a landscaping buffer.
Any other question?
The proximity to the power lines.
The area that it's going to be built on is currently just wooded area. The power lines is the only thing you can see that's clear, so the building's got to be where the woods are. So as Stan said, we try to compress the units and pull them away from the Lennox Village property lines so that we could save a strip of the woods. The way they were, they were only ten foot off of the back property line, so by the time we graded behind them and tried to get the drainage to work, we just couldn't make it do without taking every tree down. So this will leave us about a ten-foot buffer strip. And then there's, I think about half of those houses in Lennox Village have a six-foot cedar fence. So anything that's left with a gap in it, we'd fill in with existing fences also. So we'd leave a ten-foot buffer strip of trees and fill in the six-foot fences.
We've had a little bit of problem, Mr. Alexander, there in Lennox Village with drainage there. Where would this throw the, with your development, where would this throw the water?
Well...
I certainly hope it wouldn't throw back on Lennox Village.
Within the last six months, the city has, I allowed them to reroute all the drainage problems they had.
Yes.
They brought them across this property up to the power line and turned it loose. Now, as part of this development, I'll have to figure out how to handle that in a detention pond somewhere, but hopefully the city will help me with it a little bit. But we got all the problems that were going into Lennox, shifted them over to me, and now I can handle them on this project.
That's right, there were those big old trees falling down as close to the road, didn't it?
That's correct. They come across the street instead of going through Lennox, it detoured to the north. We put it in a pipe and took it all the way off of Lennox Village.
So you've got your water line pretty well in shape right now.
That's correct.
What you gonna do, go back on the Lennox Village drain?
That's correct.
Okay, and then we've got a ten, what'd you say, ten-foot buffer there with the...
What we've got, I think we'll end up about twenty feet off the property lines. We'll be able to leave about ten foot of it, and the other ten foot we can use for drainage and saw it and take care of any other problems we have.
Thank you. I know the residents are a little concerned. I got a couple of phone calls last night, and I told them that I thought we would get that addressed today, and so I appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, of course, it's already done PRD, so there's no change.
Well, it's minimal changes. I think the people that are wanting to build it would have gone along with the existing plan, but it's just, this makes it just a lot cleaner to do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions from Council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dole.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Before we vote, let me call for a public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this alteration of plan. Yes, ma'am. Come up and identify yourself if you would. Come on up and have a seat.
Good morning. I'm Penny Stutzman. I live at twenty-three Tuscanic Cove, and we do have a few concerns in our community. Mr. Cisco has spoken to the drainage problem, and I'm glad to hear that they've been working on that because we do have a drainage problem where I live. And we wanted to be sure that adequate drainage was planned for the Jade subdivision. Another concern we have is traffic. Old Humboldt Road is narrow, winding, and there's a lot of traffic on it. And this will increase the number of vehicles that will travel that road. And even though we have a traffic sign that says thirty miles per hour, you don't see many people going thirty miles an hour, so perhaps this can be addressed. And also safety with an increase in the population in this area. We have had some break-ins and thefts from Lennox Village subdivision, so I am concerned about additional population. And one question I have, are these rental homes or will they be private ownership homes?
We don't regulate that under zoning. We can't, so I can't address that. I can't address the traffic. We're talking about twenty-four units. So we're, you know, based on our parking standard, are two cars per unit, you're talking about forty-eight cars, which is, you know, minimal in terms of traffic flow. And I understand the background traffic is already there, but in terms of the things that we look at in terms of traffic generation, that's somewhat minor. And I know that from a speed standpoint and a crime standpoint, of course, those are two police matters that zoning also cannot really address. But we do take into account the access point, and there is one way into the development and off of Old Humboldt Road. And we have taken into account the drainage. As we show on the site plan, there is a detention area that's shown provided as part of the site plan, and we require that a development not fix every problem that already exists, but they do have to take care of whatever water they're going to create as a part of their development, and they have done that, and we will review that as a part of the construction drawings. So I feel like we've addressed the things that we have the jurisdiction and the authority to address in this development.
Thank you.
Could you, did you give us your name for the record? Did I miss it? Your name for the record?
Stutzman.
Thank you. Thank you for your coming.
Thank you, Ms. Stutzman.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? Item two, under new business, is consideration of the acceptance of the street, Willshire Drive realigned, located in roadway dedication flat, relocated portion of Willshire Drive east of Summer Drive and depicted on the attached map.
This is a improvement that is a part of the development plan that the hospital is pursuing in this area. And as a part of that, Willshire Drive is going to be relocated and realigned from its old location. And what you see on the map is a, the red area that you see, that's kind of like an elbow, is the old alignment, and you can see the new alignment, which provides for a straighter, safer type of alignment, and also a relocated alignment that lines up with the street to the west. And that is, represents the new right-of-way, and basically what they're doing is dedicating that new right-of-way for the new alignment. And the Planning Commission has recommended that to you.
Move for approval.
Second motion for approval and second, any discussion from Council?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Have you had any calls from the neighbors that live in that community?
We receive calls from time to time. They're not associated with this dedication. They're more just the nature of construction and the activities going on. As you well know, any major construction project has some impacts. And we've gotten some calls from just some accessibility things from time when you have workers out there and their parking and equipments moving around and you're trying to mobilize, there can be conflict sometimes, but...
The road alarm is not the issue.
Yeah. But anytime, anytime we do have those issues, I know the hospital gets those calls. I know Lester Sands and some of the people out there address those and handle those on a daily basis. We address the ones that we have the ability to address and try to kind of be a mediator in these situations. But again, in all these cases, they're not related to bad, our poor design, you know, bad development patterns. They're more related to just the impact of having construction going on where you've still got some existing residential that still remains, and those transitional points can sometimes be conflict points.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
Motion unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item three is consideration of the street right-of-way encroachment agreement between Jackson Transit Authority and the City of Jackson for installation of bus shelter at sixteen fifty-four South Highland Avenue. Scott?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
JTA identified a location on South Highland for a new bus shelter to go, and since it is going to be in the area of the right-of-way, then we prepared a right-of-way encroachment agreement between us and JTA. There will be a concrete pad and shelter built there by them, but since it is on the right-of-way, we put this agreement together.
Any questions from Council? Is there a motion for approval?
I move.
Motion, second. Discussion from Council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is consideration professional service agreement for as-needed planning and engineering services between the City of Jackson and Neil Schaefer, Inc. Scott?
Okay, yes, stated this is really a renewal of an existing contract that we've had with Neil Schaefer for the last five years. We've set this up similar with a, as years, as the years go by, year to year, there'll be a natural increase in the rates. But it's really a way to set up an on-call service so that we can use Neil Schaefer for general traffic signal timing, day-to-day usage of their services.
Move the approval, second.
Motion, second. Discussion from Council.
One quick question. Did you say the fees on that were about the same that were in prior year?
They have, the last contract that was in place, the CPI index, was the mechanism we used for a year-to-year basis to increase.
Okay.
I think they have updated some of the titles now to, as a starting point for this contract, but we will add, we will use the CPI from year to year for the next five years.
Okay, one question is from the contract that we just finished, this new contract we issued, is that CPI still what they used for whatever increase they had in the...
I don't think so. I think they used, there was, I think the senior engineer title for one increased a good bit, and then some of the other titles stayed the same.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
I have a quick question if I may, ma'am.
Go ahead, Council.
Am I correct in that we don't have to bid out professional services contracts?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, any additional questions?
Did we bid this out originally way back when we first started using it?
We didn't. We've been using Neil Schaefer because of their history with knowing the signal system and being one of the main ones, local firms that had the traffic expertise. And that's a, that's a use we use on a daily basis where it's not a real definable project. I may have him go out and check a signal timing or re-time one or two signals. So it's more of a way that he can do that on an hourly rate instead of agreeing to a certain amount of fixed, you know, certain fixed scope each time we have him go out. We're still able to hire other consultants, you know, when projects come up of any significant size. When there's grants or something like that, we still go through a selection process, you know, for consultant selection. So it's not that we'll use Neil Schaefer for every professional service that the city needs in this regard, but it is a way to lock in rates that I know when I pick up the phone and call him to run out and use a smaller, do a smaller scope, that those rates will be the rates that he'll have to charge, and it locks him in for that.
Okay, any additional questions from Council? Neither of we have a motion, so if not, Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Scott. Item five is presentation by Jackson Arts Council. Jan Baud and Kathy Leatherwood are here, so girls, come on up. Morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing us to be with you this morning. We appreciate your willingness to let Kathy and me come before you. I did not come alone. Not only did I bring Kathy, but we have several members of the arts community with us today. There are seventeen arts organizations that we are honored to have here in Jackson, and many of those folks are here, either as staff or volunteers. If you don't mind, I'd like for them to stand so you can see who they are. And say thank you to them. Those folks have joined Kathy and me this morning to do a couple of things. First of all, we want to say a word of thanks to all of you. We appreciate so much the funding that you give us to the arts through the Jackson Arts Council, which spreads out to all of the arts community. We could not do what we do if it weren't for your generosity and for your support. So thank you so much on behalf of all of us. Those things that we do, we want to be held accountable for. We believe that you've entrusted us with those funds, and we want to be held accountable. In just a few minutes, Kathy's going to tell you about some of the things that happened this year because of what you've done. But before that, I want to take a moment, if it's all right with you, Mayor, to say a personal word of thanks to Kathy Leatherwood. As many of you know, Kathy is leaving our organization in about twenty-eight days, and we take her resignation with gratitude and with much Thanksgiving for all that she has done, not just for the arts, but for all of our community. So Kathy, I want to take this moment to publicly say thank you for all that you have done. She's been great, and we look forward to great things coming from Kathy and Rex still in the days ahead because they're going to stay plugged into especially the downtown area, and we're excited about that. Before she tells you a little bit about what has happened in last year, thanks to you, we have a video that we'd like to share. It's very short, but thanks to Dan Brooks, who is sitting in our audience and is a member of our arts board. He put this together to explain to you why many of us who are volunteers are involved in the arts, and we've done it by interviewing some of the leaders in our community. So at this time, I'll ask Marcus to roll the tape. I'm Jan Baud, Assistant to the President for Constituent Relations at Union University and the President of the Jackson Arts Council. Today, I'm here with my good friend Gary Grisham, who is the CEO of the Bank of Jackson, as well as the immediate past president of the Arts Council. Gary and I have something in common. We both love the arts and believe that the arts play a very significant role in our community.
There are many organizations with which we could give our time and resources, but we've chosen the Jackson Arts Council.
So why are the arts important to our community, and why have we chosen to be involved in the Jackson Arts Council?
I'm Bobby Arnold, and President and CEO of West Tennessee Healthcare. We need strong arts programming in order to be more competitive when we recruit new businesses and doctors to our area. The arts are an important factor in connecting businesses and doctors to our community.
I'm Lyndon Noe. I'm an independent professional artist in Jackson, and I think the arts are crucial to building community. The Jackson Arts Council has done a wonderful job in supporting me and all of the other artists like me in Jackson and helping us to thrive in this community.
I'm Trey Raven, External Affairs Director for AT&amp;T. When my family and I decided to move to Jackson, a major factor in our decision was access to the arts. I want my children to be exposed to the arts.
By day, I'm Cynthia Manuel Man, owner of Industrial One Source Incorporated and Sut de Jour. But by night, I'm a stage actress in the local theater productions. Jackson gives us lots of opportunities to see amateurs and professional artists, to be a part of the audience or a part of the action. Now, we can give you good food in my restaurant, but we need the arts to feed our souls.
I'm Ricky Kent, Principal of Northside High School. Studies show that students involved in the arts have improved problem-solving skills, have increased self-confidence, and are less likely to drop out. Of course, I don't need the studies to know that I see the positive impact of arts on our students' day.
I'm Zoe Siberian. I've participated in the arts for fourteen years through dancing. The arts have allowed me to express myself in ways other than using words. I'm so thankful for the opportunity that the arts have given me.
I'm James Cherry, poet, author, and president of the Griot Collective of West Tennessee, a literary arts organization. The arts define our community and help mold who we are. Supporting the arts is vital.
I am Jimmy Exum, Chairman of the Board of Community Economic Development Commission and managing partner of Jackson Records. An important component of Community Economic Development Commission is cultural tourism. It has proven that cultural tourists stay longer and spend more money, and the creative industry in Tennessee represents the fourth-largest industry cluster in the state. As we grow the arts, we will reap the benefits of economic impact of cultural tourism and the creative industries.
I am Dan Brooks. I volunteer my time for the community, and I serve as Vice President of Development for the Jackson Arts Council. It is critical that we support the arts for the many reasons that these fine people have shared with us today. We are asking for your support.
Thank you for supporting...
Thank you for supporting the arts.
Thank you, Kathy, I'll watch you.
Well, I think, I love that video, it shows so many different reasons why the arts are so important. And funding from the city has enabled to carry out our strategic plan this past year. And some of the things that we, that explains why these are actual things that happen to support the arts. We were cultural partners with several arts projects, working with the Jackson Theater Guild, Ballet Arts, the Symphony, Friends of the Library, and with Union University, bringing art forms through, together for collaboration of several organizations. And bringing art therapy to children with autism at the Star-Sense Center. Our educational program to strengthen the infrastructure of the arts organizations, including grants, workshops, education for arts organization board members, collaborating with the Chamber of Commerce for educational workshops and information to the public about arts and art events. We joined forces with the Jackson Downtown Development Corporation to inform the public about art venues, events, and parking availability downtown. And we also joined forces with the Sportsplex to cross-merchandise art events to have visitors enjoy more of what Jackson has to offer. And of course, that does, does increase our taxes, so that's good, so we have more tax dollars. We work with the media, the surrounding chambers, and the regional publications to promote the art events in Jackson. And we promoted hundreds of events to bring people into Jackson and to, so that people could have access to the arts in Jackson. On a personal note, thank you for the support that you, that the city's given me for the last twelve years as the Executive Director. Because of your vision of what the arts can do for our citizens and our economy, we, meaning the Arts Council and you and all the people that are in the audience and the organizations they represent, have been able to accomplish what we have for our city. And with your continued support, the future looks bright. I think there's an awful lot of opportunity for growth for the arts here in Jackson to build on what we have already built here. I will miss being a part of this annual, coming to sit here and talk to you and tell you, and get to brag a little bit about what we've done and, and hope that you're very confident in the way that we use the dollars that you give us. And although I won't be sitting here, I'll be sitting in the audience because I want to support the arts forever, that's just way too important for our city. And I love Jackson and want to be very much a part of it for years to come. So thank you for your support.
Kathy, thank you. And I think speaking on behalf of the city, we very appreciative of you and your, your efforts to improve the arts family here in Jackson, Tennessee. And we're going to miss you, but we know you're going to be around. We appreciate everything that you've done for us in the past and I'm sure that you'll continue to be a big part of the city of Jackson, Tennessee. And we thank you for that.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Item six, under New Business, is presentation by Aspel Recovery Center. And I think Mr. Barber is here. Richard, if you'll come up. Morning, guys.
Good morning, mayor, members of the council. Let me, before we start our presentation, let me just say that after seeing Mr. Pickens and the Madison Scots, I'm grateful that we don't have to wear kilts to do our presentation, because I couldn't get our bus to do that, mayor, I just couldn't. Let me, let me say thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before this body this morning. So many times, the investment that the city makes in nonprofits, unfortunately by the community, is viewed as a drain on resources. And, and they don't get the opportunity to see the impact that the city's dollar is having on the community. We appreciate the opportunity to come for you this morning to review what your investment has done with Aspel and the Midtown area, the impact we're having on the community. I'd like to say that some of our staff, many of our volunteer board members are here today, I'd ask them to stand and be recognized. They've taken time out. So what I would like to do now is turn this presentation over to our Board Chair, Les Jacob, to, to review the last few years that we've had there at Aspel and the impact that our partnership with the city is having on the community where we live.
Thank you, Richard. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the time this morning that you're giving us to come before you and tell our story. Aspel Recovery Center was started in the late nineteen seventies as a facility to aid indigent men, initially men that were struggling with alcoholism and then later drug abuse. And from that beginning, we have grown. And in the last ten years since Richard joined us as our Executive Director, we've grown dramatically. And I don't think the city is really aware of what we have done. We have invested approximately a million dollars in community development in Midtown Jackson in the last few years through housing grants, direct investments of our own funds, and support from the Federal Home Loan Bank. We've created a substance-free recovery living community in Midtown Jackson that was once considered a deteriorating section of the city. We paid over twelve thousand dollars in city and county property taxes each year for the taxation on the property that we own and develop. We employ thirty people, twenty full, almost thirty people, twenty full-time and eight part-time, and have a payroll of over five hundred thousand dollars in the community. Our program now consists of a full continuum of care that includes men's residential, women's residential, men's and women's transitional housing. We have two halfway houses for men, are about to open a halfway house for women. We have independent living programs and a twenty-six-unit apartment complex all in the middle of Midtown Jackson. All of that is conducted as an alcohol and drug-free community. And we have upwards, over eighty people living on our campus at any one time. Our most recent outcome studies indicate that eighty percent of our graduates are substance-free six months after they complete our programs, significantly above the state and national averages. And we also think this is very important. Eighty percent of the people that come to us are unemployed. Six months after they complete the program, we have forty-eight percent are employed. And we think even though they're not all employed, that's a dramatic improvement, especially in a time where people are very, having a hard time finding work. And we're giving these people the skills to go out and become productive, tax-paying members of our community. In areas of community involvement, our professional leaders and staff have participate, participate in the city's Safe Neighborhoods Task Force, the city's Targeted Crime Initiative. We serve on the City of Jackson Drug Court Treatment Team. We're active in the Jackson-Madison County Anti-Drug Coalition. And we're a service provider for the mayor's Second Chance Program. And in terms of recognition, in the last several years, we've received recognition for the work in our program. In two thousand and ten, we were the Chamber of Commerce Pinnacle Award winner for nonprofit agencies. Two thousand and eleven, we were selected as Goodwill Community Partner of the Year. Two thousand and twelve, we received the Mayor's Choice Award for Community Restoration. And yesterday, we just learned that we were selected by, as one of the top, best, it's the Nonprofit Times, that's a professional trade magazine for nonprofit organizations. We were selected as one of the best nonprofits to work for in the United States of America, the top fifty nonprofits in the country. This includes agencies such as the Wounded Warrior Project in Jacksonville, Florida, the American Heart Association, and many others that you would recognize as having an impact of national scope. We were selected because of our leadership in planning, corporate culture and communications, role satisfaction, work environment, relationships between supervisors, trainers, and development pay and benefits for our staff. I would say this several times when we have visitors on our campus, they come away and say there's something special about this place. And it is a very special place because of our professional staff and leadership, the respect and love that they treat each other and the respect and love that they bring to our clients and the people that we serve. We're very, very appreciative of the support we receive from the city of Jackson. We feel like we have a wonderful partnership and we hope that that will grow and improve over the years. We have dedicated ourselves to having a positive impact on the quality of life in this community and we're very thankful of your support.
Richard, thank you. And Les and all the board members, thank you all for the dedication that you all put into this, this agency. It has just been tremendous to see the growth of this agency right almost next door to us here and what you do on a day-to-day basis for your, for your residents and for your clients. Any, any questions or comments from council? If not, thank you, thank you.
One other comment, mayor, quickly. We know, and alcohol and drug addiction is not a popular cause to support. When, when you're, when you're talking to people in the community, that's not one that's popular to support. But our response to that is always, if you look at your own circle of friends, your family, you'll know and love someone and care about someone that has a problem with alcohol and drugs. Not any different than any of our families. So we would ask that, not only is, in your day-to-day life, you, you keep that in mind, that it's a disease, we treat it as a disease, we, it's treatable, and we can have a positive impact on the community.
Richard, I just want to say I appreciate what you do and your commitment to Midtown. I'm a member of Lambeth Memorial Church and that, that area and that neighborhood has changed dramatically since you all have been there and made that commitment to revitalize that area and be a part of the community.
And that church has been very supportive, councilman, they really have.
Any other questions, comments from council? If not, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Best to you. Item seven, New Business, consideration of inter-local mutual assistance agreement between the Jackson Police Department, law enforcement agencies of the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth judicial districts regarding the multi-jurisdictional gang and crime task force. If you have any questions, Captain Corley is here. Captain, you want to take just a second and explain that?
Sure. Good morning. I'm sure most of you are aware of the, the efforts that both District Attorneys General from our district and the twenty-eighth district have, have put together since last fall, trying to address and identify criminal gang offenders and other violent offenders in our communities for both districts. That entails a lot of agencies working together with information sharing and resource sharing and doing those things. Certainly, the state law allows us to temporarily do that. As this progresses, we felt it prudent to memorialize that understanding that we're working together and for that purpose. And this agreement just does that. It also speaks to, heaven forbid there be any type of accident or issue when one of our officers is in another jurisdiction or theirs is in ours and how, how that plays out and the procedures to go forth with that. So that's what this agreement is about.
Move the approved agreement.
I have one question. Captain, we talked this morning, could you be able to provide us some quantifiable evidence of the progress?
I can, Sergeant Philip Kemper is here with the, with our gang unit. You could probably address that a little bit more specifically, but I've, I've got some general numbers. If you'd like Sergeant Kemper to respond to that, he has a little bit more detailed information about the impact that the group has been doing so far.
Good morning, Sergeant.
Good morning, mayor and council.
Good morning.
We've been working with TBI and the other jurisdictions in the twenty-sixth and the twenty-eighth judicial district. We've done three saturation operations here in Jackson, as well as Haywood County, Chester County, Gibson County, assisting those. Here in Jackson, we've made twenty-three arrests during those operations. We have made federal gun cases, made drug arrests, people with active warrants during those operations. Jackson is a pilot program with, with TBI as far as creating a new gang file for CRMS. And JPD is going to be instrumental in spreading that program to the other counties and jurisdictions in the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth judicial districts.
Okay, any other, any other questions, council? I think we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item eight, under New Business, consideration of resolution to approve an agreement between the Madison County, Tennessee Clerk and the city of Jackson, Tennessee regarding the issuance of city stickers.
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval, a second?
Second.
A second discussion. Counsel, please vote. Item nine is consideration extending the city of Jackson's contract with the Ferguson Group. Counsel, as, as the revised contract, a little different from what we've done over the years, reduction in cost of roughly sixty thousand dollars, but modifying their, their, the terms of the contract. And looking at the condition, the federal government, the possibility of securing any federal grants, some that we desperately need. We feel, like the staff feels like there'll be some assistance in getting that done, so.
Move to approve.
Have a motion for approval and a second. Discussion, council?
Question, question on the motion?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, as relates to twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, do we have figures on how much monies through federal grants that the Ferguson Group brought to the city of Jackson?
We do have those numbers and I'm not for sure. I think at some point, maybe not recently, not within the recent year. I know, let's see, all my staff is bailed. Ron, do you want to come up and just kind of give some numbers, if you have them, on the success of this group this past year?
Counsel, since the exception, these twenty-five million dollars has come down through the Ferguson Group. And that was primarily by obtaining earmarks. Their focus has changed to, from, from a really lobbying group to more of a grant support group now. So I'm not sure specifically what you're asking for, counsel.
The last two years.
The last two years.
Dollar amount and what is the focus for the upcoming year?
Okay, the last, last year, we had a total of one grant. It was a slow year last year. That was an extension of the, of the re-entry program. There were, there were several attempts to make, made, they certainly put forth a great deal of effort, if I can find it here. The number of, we had, we had five grants pursued. One was successful, the re-entry, one was rejected, which was a firefighter support grant. And three were dropped at the local level. But that doesn't mean that the Ferguson Group didn't try to help us. They were right there with us all the way through. The previous year, I don't, I don't have those numbers.
Okay, the focus on grants for this year?
For this, for this year.
Coming this new year?
For this year, we're looking at help with the Choice Neighborhood Grant Program, which is the redevelopment of Allington Heights Housing Development and homes in that surrounding area. Housing Authority's been working on that and we need Ferguson's support with that. We're looking, a youth task force, youth task force has been working steadily for the past few months. And we're looking hard at a mentoring, a youth mentoring program. And then we need help with the Schaefer Group. There's a whole bunch of grants that have just now come out through the, through the federal government and we need to look through those and prioritize. We'll get help from Ferguson on three to four of those.
We, we make a formal request that we include housing, that they pursue some type of housing grants, because as we know, the CDBG monies is going down and dilapidated housing all throughout certain parts of the city. We're making a formal request that they actively pursue housing grants also for this new fiscal year?
Yeah, the, the choice, as far as which grants to pursue is made by, at the local level.
Correct. That's what we're making this formal appeal.
And that's what the choice. And that's what the Choice Neighborhood Program is supposed to do, so, work with housing.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments from council? Okay, we have a, have a motion and a second, I think we need. No questions, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item Ten, Under New Business, Consideration of Resolution Approving a Substantial Amendment Number One to the Annual Action Plan 2012, 2013. And Dave is here to answer any questions, council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The resolution is pretty clear as where we're pulling the dollars from. These were two activities that there's a new, as part of the IDIS system, HUD identifies slow-moving activities, and these are two of them. And I will tell you that the Access Modifications Program is not hurting because of this, because we continue to fund them annually or biannually. I mean, some, yes, biannually, and they understood the pulling of these funds because these were $2,009. They needed to be reprogrammed. The code enforcement, we pulled out of that program also to fund this program, about And so, that, that's what's going to fund the, the new, the continuation of the Youth at Rescue's program during the summer months through WI.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion questions from council?
Is, is the, the full amount going to the youth program?
The $25,000. The, yes, we've, we've pulled the full $19,000 from the Access Modification Program to end that activity, and then we pulled $5,600 for the code enforcement program. Still need some of those dollars in code enforcement to tear down several dilapidated houses that have been foreclosed on.
I guess my confusion is showing total activity cost $50,000 on the second page, but we're just, we're just reallocating $25,000 to go in. I guess that's just the documentation, the way it shows.
Yes, sir, and then when you get the annual action plan, plan, another $25,000 will be added, so we won't have to continue to make these, hopefully these modifications.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? If not, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
One late item on the agenda is Consideration, Item Eleven, Consider, Consideration of a Resolution of Support for a Local Interstate Connector Route Application with the Tennessee Department of Transportation. I don't know if you all have a cover letter with that resolution, but Keith is pretty much self-explanatory, we're trying to capture $2 million and try to get it as quickly as we can, so that's why we're a bit late getting on the agenda. Keith?
Move to approve.
Motion approval, second. On second thought, Keith.
Thank you, Keith. Best presentation I've ever given.
That's a great presentation, very good.
Mayor, did you say we're trying to catch $2 million?
Yes, we are.
You get a quick motion and a second.
Before we vote on that, can we get Keith to give us a slight overview of what we're doing?
I mean, getting $2 million is good.
It's good.
Yes, sir. The FE Right project that we're working on is what's targeted for this local interstate connector application, the T-DIT. It has a maximum of $2 million for our construction phase. We have an estimated total project cost of $8 million, just shy of $8 million. $7 million of that would be the construction phase, so if we're successful with this application, that just reduces the other federal and local money then that we would have to put on that construction phase.
We were intended to do this project regardless.
That's correct.
This is just where we're going to get some funding.
That's right.
Where exactly on FE Right are we talking about? You're talking about the interchange of the bypass, I mean, the interstate, FE Right, or somewhere different?
It would be widening. The only section of FE Right that's not already four or five lanes, that's the two-lane section from Eugene Parkway, basically south of Ridgecrest, just south of the interstate, all the way down to Highway 70, the Whitehall intersection. Those, those taper back into two lanes right through there, through the Parkway intersection of Jackson State, and we want to try to widen that back out to four or five lanes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions? If not, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Item Twelve, Board Appointments. We lack one appointee to the newly-created NED Advisory Board.
So moved.
Recommended Richard Beach.
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
On the keep Jacksonville for Commission, if we can, we'll take the reappointment of Sarah Graham, reappointment of Ken McCorkle, reappointment of Sherri Taylor. If I can get a motion on those three.
So moved.
Reappointment.
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
The next one would be Appointment of Von Cassie to fill the expired term of Dave Rosten.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
And the last is Keith Wilson to fill the expired term of Rad Allington.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Final item on the agenda is Consideration of Invoices Over $10,000.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
There being no cluttered business, meeting is adjourned.